We will call meeting to order. And are you available, give me a roll call, Jendy?
Yeah, I am. Yep, I am. Okay. Ron Jones here. Tom Johnson?
He's here. Hi, Tom.
Tom Johnson?
Yeah, he's here.
Are you here, Tom? Okay. Debbie Darless is here. Tom, Tom Sargent?
Here. I'm here.
Pat Blair is here. Yeah, Seth Haylin?
Here.
Okay, and Collette is here.
I'm here.
Yep, and Mike is here. I saw Todd. Todd, you're here, right?
Yeah, I'm here.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda for this?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motions carried. We accepted the agenda. And I believe most this evening is going to be discussion on the land survey with Tom. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes, that's correct. This is everything with comprehensive land use plan. And Todd, you got it.
Okay, then I guess turn it over to either you, Mike, or to Todd.
Okay, I'll take, Mike probably wants me to take it over. So did the screen pop up for you guys? Oh, it's doing it now.
There it is.
That's not my screen that I, what screen do you got? Ah, that's not the screen I wanted. So let's stop sharing.
Oh, God!
Be careful.
How about, how about this screen? Yay! No, that other screen, that other screen was fine, but we'll come to that maybe another time. So basically, with the last time we met, we did the survey. We went through all those questions and modified them. Those questions have been modified. I sent them back to the, to start with that. I sent it back to the, to Brimfield for the trustees to look at and the department has to look at. A couple of minor tweaks there. And now it's just up to how to get this back out to the public. We talked about the postcards and things like that. So I was talking with Mike earlier this week and we'll need to try to figure out how to get that out sometime next week. So I just want to let you know where that is at. And I thought the changes looked good, the what you guys proposed. And I made all the changes that you had asked me to make. So what we're talking about tonight is I gave you this, I gave you this document that I have on the screen at the last meeting, but we never got to it because we were, we had spent so much time on the survey. So what this is, is it's the, the beginning, you know, this is the beginning of the land use plan. The acknowledgements, you guys will be in here, the trustees will be in here for working on the plan. And as, the product they gave you for the meeting last month only went through chapter six, but there's, you know, there's parks that have to be done, infrastructure and land use. And I know we have much further along. I was debating whether or not I shoot that over to you, but then I wasn't even sure we were having a meeting. So I held on to it. So I'll have that for parks for the next meeting. These are abbreviations, acronyms that some, that we use sometimes. And people are like, what, what, what does that mean? So we put some of those abbreviations in here. And then I'm just going to walk through this. And if you guys have questions, please stop, feel free to stop me and ask those questions. But going through the first chapter, this chapter is really the introduction of what a plan is, why do we need a plan, how does a plan work kind of thing. And so we also, the introduction would also be a history section, which that is, that is ready. It was, just wasn't given, it wasn't given out. I don't like dropping stuff on you guys without you guys having a chance to look at it. Chapter two is the population and growth trends. So over here, you can see, you know, 1960, 1970, 1980, 1990, you know, these are, these are actual numbers, right? These are actual, you know, what the population was in those years. This chart here, you know, it's, you know, you can tell me to take things out if you'd like, but this shows household income. So, or actually, this shows where the residents are located. I'm sorry, the next one's household income. So this one shows where residents live. You can see that, you know, there's 2,800 to 3,400 people living here, 27 to 2,800 people live here, and 1,500 to 2,000 living here. So your densest area is in the north side of 76. And then we looked at projections, what's the population going to be? I'm, you know, I hate projections because, you know, the reason why I hate projections is a crystal ball kind of. People love that projections because they feel that helps them plan, right? And that's why planners do projections. But in case, in this case, the American Community Survey is projecting that Brimfield's population was 10,378 in 2018. And they're projecting that your population will grow by less than 150, roughly 150 by 2025. I would imagine you've had enough growth between 2018 and now that you probably have 150 more, you know, people living in your community. That's why I don't like projections. But then if you follow it for another five years, it's only going to go up by 25 people. And then another five years, it's only going to go by 30 people. So that's why I'm not really, I'm not really crazy about AMAT's population projections here. Just pointing that out. So I do.
That almost seems confusing because people will look at that and go, what the heck is that?
Agree with you. AMAT's, who AMAT's is, that's the African Metropolitan Area Transit Study. They're the ones that do the roads for both Portage and Summit County. So we rely on, we rely on them for accurate data. They, that data is used to project what roads need to be improved. And based on, they're basically saying that, you know, between now and 2045, you're going to have 250 new people living here. And I, I just know it. Friends and everything else, I'm just, again, I don't want to get hung up on this data. I'm just pointing it out to you, you know, that we pay attention to it.
Todd, can I, can I ask this question, though?
Sure.
Would there not be accurate numbers for 2018? Instead of showing it as a projection?
Well, okay, yeah, well, I think they use 2018 as the baseline because that's the, you know, what 2018 is, is the American Community Survey. And I don't know how many of you guys have ever taken the American Community Survey, but I've only met a handful of people who have ever even taken that survey. So what they do is they survey a handful of households and they make a misinterpretation based on that limited survey of how many people that they think live in that community now. And there may be other factors that go into it, but I don't know. I rarely have ever met a person who's taken that survey. But if we go back to, if I go back to this other page, you know, in 2010, you were at 376. And this says you only gone up two people.
Yeah.
We should be up close to 12,000 now.
Well, I'm making a note of this anyway. I'm just going to contact AMAT's and find out what's, what's going on here, you know? So, yeah, you're right. I think, I don't know about 12,000, but you're, you're much higher than 10, 10.4, 10.5. And I mean, if, and I don't know if Yale pulled the building permits since 2010, but I think we asked for those. That would show us, you know, growth trends and potential development. I mean, just because you pulled a building permit for new houses, I mean, you actually built the house, but more than likely you have. Okay, so we don't get, I get too wrapped up on that. Just, just some of the place in our background minds that they're, they're saying that we have stagnant growth. I would argue that, that we do not have stagnant growth in Brimfield. So looking at age, this, this little chart here shows age. It's, you know, it's kind of, it kind of has a little bit of that bell curve. You know, the older folks over on the one side, the younger folks on the other side. And then in the middle here, we have, we have 2010 is the dark, is the dark green. The lighter green is 2018. And then the blue is in relation to Portage County's, you know, average. So you're pretty much, it looks like you're a little, you're a little bit higher than the average here in the center part. Maybe a little bit below average on the outer side here over here, but not much. I mean, you're pretty darn close all the way around. Education, so dark, dark is, dark, this dark green is 2010. Light green is 2018. This is Portage County, and then this is the state of Ohio. From that, from this standpoint, you know, you're hot, we're about even with Portage County as far as people with professional degrees, we're above the state average. We're at or above, we're at or above what Portage County and the state is here. We might a little bit below that, you know. And so basically, there's, again, this doesn't show a lot. It just basically says you're pretty much average. If I looked at streets boroughs, there's a little, those is a little different. They have probably a lot more just high school graduates. So, you know, versus college graduate, but it's something to look at. This is the median household income. So you have state of Ohio, Portage County, and Brimfield. And you're, you know, you're pretty, you're pretty much on the higher end on that category. You know, most, you know, almost a little over 18% or about 18 plus, 10, 28 plus, let's say two. So you're probably about 40% above $100,000 on the highest, on the average income kind of thing, which is pretty good. This was the, this was, this was the, the household income based on population and how they're located in township. So this is where the higher household incomes are, average 69 to 92. This is, this is the average income. Or actually, this is, this is an average income and this is maybe a slightly lower than average income. But again, we don't want to get ourselves wrapped around the axle here because this one, this one here is 50, 2,000 is the bottom base average. Then you have 60 and then 69. So it's, it's not really a big deal. I don't really, I really don't plan based on where, who has money and where they live. I mean, we've just planned for a better community kind of thing. Does any of you questions on these statistics here? Because this is kind of a standard thing that you provide. Nope?
Nope, sounds good.
I'm going to move on to chapter three, which is housing types. Not surprisingly, one unit detached is almost 80% of the housing type in Brimfield. That may be changing just a little bit because I know that we've had some condominiums built as well as I know there's some future condominiums coming into the area. So that may shift just a little bit. But obviously, a strong homeownership or single family ownership, anyway, kind of household stuff. Here's the building units trends we're talking about. So even though you only supposedly only grew by two, you only grew by two people since 2010. You had, you had 30, 20, almost 40. You probably had over 100 homes, way over 100 homes, maybe 200 homes built since 2010. And they only have two, two new people in the township, which is kind of. Yeah, one thing that's interesting here is houses, housing built since 2000. You know, you're how, you're a third of your housing stock or almost a third of your housing stock has been built since 2000. So that's like, that would say a younger, a younger population, definitely a younger housing stock than some of the other communities in the county. Portage County is half that, basically. Housing values, you're the greens, you're the, you're on the outside edges here. The blues are Franklin, the yellows are Suffield. And the dark greens are Portage, and these are Ohio. So you have, you have 30% of your housing stock. 30% just is above 200,000 to 300,000. So I'd say, you know, over a third of your housing stock is above $200,000 in value. And then the other house, then another 50% is in that 100,000 plus. So. Then we have, these are the subdivisions that have been built since 2000. I'm sorry. We have all the subdivisions that have been built in the last 20 years on your map here. These are, this is a years built kind of thing. We're, you know, the darker the color, the, these dark colors is before 1900. These other browns are 1950. And then as it gets closer to current time, it turns more yellow. See, you have a lot of open space slash farmland out there. This is an interesting one here, too. I like this one. The owner versus renting. Brimfield's almost 80% homeownership, which I think is.
80%?
Yeah, almost, almost. And Suffield's the same way. But like, Franklin Township's only, there's only 2/3 that way. Ohio's 2/3 that way. U.S. is less than 2/3 owner, you know, owner to renter.
That is interesting.
It is.
It is, no, it, you know, what that tells me, and I hate to judge because I, people need to rent. And I was a renter at one time. And so renting serves a purpose. But when you have a predominance of rent of owners, you have a predominance of people who are going to care about their property. You know, that they take care of their property and want to maintain that investment versus a lot of renters who are there just transient, transition housing kind of thing. They're there for a few years and they're going to, and they move on, you know? Affordability, I'm not really a huge fan about affordability because affordability, what affordable housing means, and it's important because you have to have affordable housing to have a vibrant community. But affordability is basically, is based on 30, you know, your, your rent or your mortgage is 30% of your income. If it's more than 30% of your income, it's considered not affordable. And if it's less than 30% of your, your income, then it's considered affordable. So if you could, if you bought yourself, you know, you could be, you know, making a half million dollars a year and have a $2 million house and can't afford a $2 million house even though I'm making half a dollar, half a million dollars a year, that's considered unaffordable housing. And, you know, to me, it's just, it was bad housing choice, you know? You picked the wrong house. And so a lot of people ask me, well, what is, what's the, what's the number that's affordable housing? And it's, the number really depends on the person renting or buying the house. So that's the rule of thumb. Another rule of thumb, if you were in a, in a more commuter kind of community, is you take the rent and the transportation costs. And if you're, let's say, let's say you want to work in Cleveland and live in Brimfield, then you would take, then affordability becomes 50% of what you make goes into transportation and housing. And I don't want to get too far in the weeds on all that discussion. But it looks like 20, you know, it looks like a fair number of folks are paying less than 20% of their income here. And then there's this 25, so these are the, these are the people that are, that are in the risk of being unaffordable. I don't have, I just have, I just have units. I don't have, you know, where this is or anything like that. But anyways, okay, we'll move on. Does any of you have questions on chapter three?
No.
All right, so chapter four is your natural resources, which is relatively, you know, consistent. I mean, they change a little bit, but for the most part, they, they, you know, remain consistent. So here's your topography. Basically, the higher slopes are the red colors. And then the orange, you know, still has a pretty decent slope to it. Then the yellows, still a moderate slope. Then the, this lighter green is a more gentle. And then a flattened, the flat is this, this darker green. So you can see that for the most part, there are some red areas in here, some, some places with some hills and some slope to it, which I like having hills and slopes. But same time, there's, there's plenty of areas that are flat and great suitable for building and things like that. This here is showing your, where your wetlands and your flood plains are. So these little, these little doodads here are all marshy butt areas. And then your flood plains are in these kind of yellowish, taupe-ish colors. You know, oftentimes adjacent to a wetland and definitely around water bodies and streams. And then this one is the glacial. This is like groundwater availability, if you needed a well. We, we've mapped out some of the, some of the wells that are out here. Those are the, these purple dots are all public wells. This is, in basically, this very, here's 20 to 100 gallons per minute you can pump out of there. This is supposedly a buried aquifer, which means you can pump up probably a lot more water. It's actually over, it's between, this is between 100 and 500 gallons per minute you can pump. This next map is pollution. So when you have sandy soils and, and like, if you're up in Shalhersville, for example, or Manaway Township, they have a lot of sandy soils. And we do have sandy soils here. Hence, that area I just showed you with, that you could pump a lot of water out, that's considered a buried valley. So there's probably lots of sand in there. And so that, if you have sand and you have an oil spill or a chemical spill, it gets down in the water, down in the groundwater fast and is quickly dispersed into the groundwater, which is obviously bad. And you, and what's the point of that is you try to, you know, it'd be great to overlay where the industrial is because with, with these kind of soils, you want to avoid putting industrial on top of them in case there was a spill of some kind. So again, that's the purpose of these kind of maps. Hydric soils, so what, a hydro soil is a soil that's basically have either high groundwater or holds a lot of water. Oftentimes, it's associated with wetlands. And so the, what you don't want to do is you typically don't want to build heavy structures on hydro, on hydro soils. You usually don't want to put basements in where hydro soils are. But you, it's not that you can't build there or you can't put a basement in there. It's just that those areas are typically going to hold water. So you're going to have to do extra stuff to either maintain the, the weight of a building or to, you know, make sure a basement stays dry. You know, you might have more problems with that. And then we've got industrial operations. We go where the oil and gas wells are in the, in the township. So this, this is, we have, we have another map that, which I don't think we're using, but we have another map that shows how the, how these wells are producing. That's always an interesting map to see how well these oil wells produce. And then this is areas showing where the, where there's critical natural areas. Either they're wetlands in the brownish colors or if they're forested in the greenish colors. So you can kind of see where those, those are. And I forget which subdivision this is right now. That's Pleasant Lakes, isn't it? Yeah, that's Pleasant Lakes. They're showing all this, this high quality woodlands, but I think a lot of it's been developed now. And then this last one, which, let me see, yeah, this last one is the community services. So we, we talk about parks and recreation in this one. We have schools, we have police and fire, and then like government offices. So this map shows where those are. I think this one, I'd like, you know, when we get, when we get done with this one, I want to turn these, these parts, since we already have it done, I want to turn these parks on so that you can click on them and I'll tell you what's there, that kind of thing. This one is some, the common facility. So this one's like showing parks and trails. And then this one's showing the facilities where the, you know, the police station is. Is that library still here?
Not in the Brimfield? No.
All right. I saw, I just saw that on the map and I thought, wait a minute, that's gone. All right, so I'll remove that library. EMS, there's, we show where the churches are, that kind of thing. And then this is the transportation chapter. And here's, here's where the arterial classifications are. Most of these are from, you know, taken from AMAT's maps. So dots here are where the bus stops are. These hash lines are where the, where the part comes through and picks people up. This, this weird blue, you know, these colors might need to change. This blue is the interstate, this red is arterials, there's gray interstate. This purple is the major collector. Yeah, I'm not really crazy about these colors, but that, you know, so like, there's town edge, there's all forged. And then the minor arterial, arterials is, I, I think, townage going into, townage going into townage is probably not a minor arterial, curial anymore. But anyway. And then I like, I always like these maps because they, they tell you how many, how many cars travel on, on the roads each day. So on, on I-76 here, between 22 and 58,000 trips go through here. And then we have, then we have these, these darker, this, like Sandy Lake has 800 to 4,000 trips. Rand Field, 8,400 trips. This is townage, which has between 4,000 and 9,000 trips every day. There is, on the south side of 43, you're saying 9,000 to 14,000 on the, but then when you get to Interstate 76 going north, it looks, it looks, I can't tell if that's an orange or a red, but if it's an, I think it's meant to be an orange. And that would be 14 to 22,000 trips, which is probably what it is. 14 to 22,000 trips going north off of 76. So I always find these interesting because people always, you know, when people want to locate their commercial business, they want to know what's the daily trips in front of my business or for my potential business. And then, hey, this is, this also comes from AMAT's. The pavement condition, good to fair. And I'm sure this will change in the, in the spring. But anyway, so this, this kind of gives a range between, you know, I guess 60 to 90 to, all the way up to 100. The darker, the darker greens, the better. The lighter yellows are not, not as good. Then we have capital improvement projects coming up. And we've identified four. And they probably, I'm going to stick up here. So here's the four capital improvement projects. Townage Road, a couple of I-76s in a state road 43. So we've, we've listed them. And they're in the AMAT's Transportation Improvement Plan for 2021 to 2024. So in the next four years. You can see the years that they're going to be and how much they're going to cost. So that's where I, that's where I end up stopping here, though. And I, like I said, we have a few more sections to add. And I was looking ahead and I know they're basically done and ready to show you, but I hate to give them to you since you hadn't had a chance to see them and just throw them in your lap. So I'll make sure we talk about those at the next meeting. And then we start talking about the existing plan that we had, you know, that you had. And then start talking about goals and objectives. I don't want to get too far along with that until after we had like the SWAT with the trustees as well as get the survey results back from the, from the residents that it's part of the survey process. But, you know, we can, we can get a few more things done.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Todd.
Yeah, thanks, Todd.
Yeah, it's great. Great work.
Any questions?
Yeah, there's no, we have no action to take on this, I don't think.
No, there's definitely no action. I was asking if you had any questions.
Okay. So you're going, you're, you're going to finish this up and then you're going to then present totally to the trustees? And then we can, then we can get it out to the public then?
Yeah, we, so there's more steps to this, right? So we have to finish this. We didn't do like land use and things like, land use and infrastructure, for example, are two elements that need to be talked about yet. And then, then we have to do the goals and objectives. And that's something we probably have to really think about. What do we want for our community? That's where I'm going to need more of your input, you know? Brimfield and everything else, but you guys live there. And I want to make sure you guys are getting the, the product you want for your future. So we'll roll up our sleeves together on that and come up with ideas of how we want those goals and objectives to go. But once you finish that, then we will, then we take it to the trustees. I'd like to have, you know, some sort of additional community input before it goes to the trustees. And I'd like, maybe I'd like to have some more community input before it goes to you guys for our final vote, you know? So you guys feel good about what, what we've all discussed, you know? But that, those are the next steps. So I'd like to get, you know, hopefully you can get this all wrapped up before the end of the year. But I think COVID really shut us down for a few months, you know? So hopefully, hopefully I'll get a reprieve if we, if we have to go into January, February.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Todd.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Todd.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, Mike, you have anything you'd like to share with us? Are you there, Mike?
They're muted, Mike.
There, can you hear me now?
Yep.
There you go.
Yeah, no, there's nothing on, aside, I mean, obviously, we've worked yet still on the comprehensive land use plan, but it's, it's going. I do agree with you guys that, you know, I think the population is probably pushing more like 15,000 compared to the 10. So I think we do need to look into some, that's in some of the apartment rentals and things of that nature that just were built. So right now, we have on the books 400 homes coming. So I think that's going to increase.
Anything else? I keep losing you. You there, Mike?
No, there's nothing else. No.
That's it. Okay. Jendy?
Yeah.
Are you, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Yeah, I'm here.
I understand that we are losing you on the 18th.
Yes, you are. We're going to miss you.
We are definitely going to miss you.
Thank you.
Have, have the trust. Have the trustees tagged anybody for your replacement or?
No, my understanding is they're going to put, put it out on Indeed or something, so.
Okay, so it's not going to be Rochelle or or the other girls then?
Oh, so, you know, and that's something I should have addressed earlier, and I did address that at the trustee meeting, and I apologize. Yeah, we are losing Jendy, and she is going to be a tremendous loss to the department. She's, she's a wonderful worker, great person, great personality. It's tremendously missed. But we are going to, to post the position as a full-time position, and we will be posting it.
Okay, well, we, we certainly wish you the, the best, Jendy.
Thank you.
You know, if you get a chance, stay in touch with us.
Oh, I will, I, I will.
Okay, we certainly appreciate all the work you've done.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate all of you guys.
We appreciate you too, Jendy.
Thank you.
So is there anything for the good of the order?
My cousin's going with the gas station in front of the school.
They did, they haven't applied yet. There's no application yet.
Good.
They have been in contact with me and there are plans. But but they're not, you know, nobody's applied.
Mom's, mom's got you here.
Thank you, Mike.
Ron, I muted you. You're going to need to unmute yourself.
Star six, Ron.
Ron, I muted you. You're going to need to unmute.
I'm unmuted.
There you go.
Welcome back, Ron.
What else do we need, you need from me? Okay. I forgot what I was going to even ask you. Oh, you, you have probably been insulated with letters about the gas station, the seats project, I'm assuming.
Yeah. Yeah, um, yeah, there is probably, I, if my memory is correct, and with all that's been going on, but there were 70 some emails that I received.
Yeah.
In addition to some phone calls. Four of those letters were in favor, and the rest were against the location.
Yeah, it is a bad location. You know, if they, the planes that I heard was, they wanted to use Falcon Way as an, in Ingress and Egress, and, you know, you get a bunch of school buses lined up there. It's the, at the end of school, there's nobody going to get in and out of there. So, okay, is there anything else?
No.
Hey, does, Mike, do you know what's going on with the gas stations across the expressway on the north side?
No, I mean, the last I looked was that Marathon, I think it was Marathon. So they, they were in debt. There's, there's liens on the property quite substantial that exceeded what people, some of the developers thought was the value of the, the land itself. It's going to be a tough one with the banks. So.
And we have no news on what's going to take place of West Menards yet, right?
Yeah, I mean, the first one is King's Car Wash.
Okay.
They're coming in, and it's not going to be the spot directly next to RVs, but, you know, one more over. That's going to be the first one in there. And then, of course, you know, I asked DeHauss for permission to, for the fire department to train in those homes, which he granted. So we, we thank him, and I think they might be training in Mike Wino's property next, which is the old golf course, so that's gone forward. Regional planning is done to replat on it, and we approved Redwood, and we're just going through a permitting process for Redwood right now, so.
Okay, very good.
And Menards is still planning on opening up towards the end of this month?
No, they pushed it to October. They're still trying to get all completely stocked and trained, so.
Okay. Sounds good.
Anybody else have any questions, have any thing you'd like to add? If not, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
We need to set the next meeting for October 8th.
Okay. October the 8th at 7:00 PM.
Yep.
So, okay, a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make a motion.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Okay, don't fight over it. Okay. Okay, motion is accepted and seconded, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for all your
Thank you, too.
Problems, folks.
Thanks, Brian.
I'll miss you.
You all.
Bye, Jendy.
Bye, Debbie.
Okay, bye, Jendy.